I'll call the city council work session as December 20th, 2017 to order at 6:05. Allow just a few extra minutes for IC roads and I didn't see any members of the public here, so if the clerk could call the roll, please.
Mayor Copeland?
Here.
James Burton is absent. Ken Jones is absent. Jeff Gard?
Here.
Robert Beadle?
Here.
Ann Schaefer?
Here.
David Allison?
Here.
James Wees?
Here.
It's a form of council.
Okay, council, tonight's work session topic is the ordinance 1162 regarding marijuana So we have those in front of us and open it for discussion.
Well, I've got some time, it looks like. I think I read the resolution as it was passed to us by planning and zoning. Which one of these maps shows the least amount of restricted space but still lets us secure federal funding for the town as accordance to the 1,000, but drug-free zone?
Number two.
Yeah, number two?
P&amp;Z is recommending number three. Because they added additional facilities to be buffered at 500 feet.
And council, Sam is here, city planners here, if you'd like her to just give us a, give you a quick overview before we start discussion. I'm seeing some nods, so thank you, Sam, for being here tonight. Yes.
So, there's three sections or chapters that are going to be affected by this ordinance. Chapter 840 is going to be repealed and reenacted, so it's going to be wiped off the book. That is establishing you guys as a regulatory council. The council has the regulatory authority. And then you guys will do, you will have a council meeting that hears when a state application is completed and has been sent back to Susan. You guys will do a council meeting, much like when the liquor license come down. And you guys have the right to protest that license renewal. I'm forgetting one. First license.
Transfer.
Renewal, well, transfer. That's it. So that's kind of what 840 is, there's some definitions in there, defines what a marijuana establishment is, which is all of them, retail, cultivation, testing, and manufacturing, which means making the goodies. Section 5.40010 is the sales tax, a serve tax, which is additional 6% levied on all marijuana products on top of the 6% sales tax. And then chapter 18.6 is the conditional use from it. The reason that whole chapter is being repealed and reenacted is because we took the opportunity to clean up a bunch of formatting, get rid of some really outdated language. Those are all as an attachment in the back unrelated to marijuana. And we added the marijuana conditional use permit section to 1860. So P&amp;Z reviewed the conditional use permit section because that's their gig. And they, staff recommended to stay with the state buffers, plus 1,000 feet for the school because that's the federal drug-free zone. And Holly's recommendation is to maximize all the federal rules that we can, showing we're trying to be in compliance with their directives. So we recommended state, which is 500 feet from churches, school, not schools because we went with 1,000, jails.
Playground, playgrounds.
Not playgrounds.
That's not in the state.
Oh, yeah.
That's not in the state. Let me find the right page.
It is in map three.
So the state is school ground, a recreational or use center, a building in which religious services are regularly conducted, or a correctional facility. That's the state required buffers. No matter what, they have to be 500 feet away from those. Staff recommended 1,000 feet away from school. P&amp;Z wanted to add additional facilities to be buffered. And originally, they were looking at 1,000 feet. And the additional buffer, the additional facilities they wanted to add were places of public gatherings and public buildings and hospitals. Staff and members on P&amp;Z were very concerned about what places of public gathering meant. I mean, that literally could be a street corner. So we agreed to refer it back to staff. We came back with a definition. And we actually changed places of public gatherings to parks and playgrounds because that is really what the core of the people who wanted to see these things added were trying to get at. And then we define public buildings as a publicly owned building with regular operating hours that is open to the public. So that, you know, the EAC lift station doesn't have to be buffered. That is a public building. We also created maps. So map one, on your attachments, is the state buffer zones only. So that means 500 feet from the school. Two is the state buffer zones with 1,000 feet from the school. That was the first recommendation of P&amp;Z. P&amp;Z came back with map three, which is 1,003 feet from the school, and the state buffers at 500 feet. And then parks, playgrounds, and public buildings and hospitals were added. And map four is 1,000 feet from everything. So those are the big highlights of the marijuana ordinance. And if you have any questions or want some clarifications, I can do my best. The state process is very involved. What they have to do to get the state licenses is very intense, a lot of documents.
Counsel, Councilman Gard.
I just got one question. Looking at the maps as I went through this, it looked like, from what we're doing, we're either, I don't know that I've had so much of an issue about going into an industrial area. I don't know if there needs to be an ambiance or anything for any of this, but the other, the only other areas we're leaving open are residential areas. I don't know.
Do you mean with map three?
Yeah.
True, yes, pretty much. Although map two is limited as well because of schools and things.
Schools and public buildings.
But unrestricted is not a residential zone. The unrestricted district is any legal use within the state of Alaska. That's why you see the mix of business and residential within the unrestricted. So that's area. That zone district is from basically the Baylor out Wyshend Road, Mavis Island, out Six Mile, Skater's Cabin, out Power Creek. Am I forgetting any more? I think that covers it.
And then Orca.
Oh, yeah. And no, Orca was part of the old.
Oh.
City battery, not, not Orca.
Okay.
It's the leash law. If you know the leash law, you know the unrestricted areas.
And firearms.
But as I look at it, I see like Vineyard Young, over above Center Drive, you know, that's, we're in town, those are the two areas we're leaving. And I don't know that we so much. I don't know that I had an issue, but I was just surprised, you know, if an area is pushed off and boom.
Which map are you looking at?
Number three.
Okay. Counselman Schaefer.
Do you have any insight as the rationale behind including public buildings? Oh, thank you. That's okay. Was there discussion about why to include public buildings and the hospital too? Because, I mean, there's a pharmacy at the hospital and I just, I don't know. I don't, I'm just wondering if there was reasons for inclusion.
There was a couple commissioners who felt like places like the library, the ferry terminal are places where kids might be around. And that's kind of where that came from in those public buildings. Libraries are not. I mean, in our instance, it's out because of the jail and stuff on town, but, you know, and that was one of their things. And then also, it's kind of funny, but the conditional use permit for junkyards, which is the code below, says you should consider public buildings when issuing a junkyard permit. So they thought we should consider it as well. That's what started the whole conversation and then it built momentum.
Okay.
So I guess for me, I completely understand them thinking of keeping, keeping it away from parks and playgrounds, but I guess I just don't see the need for all public buildings. I mean, that takes entire industrial park out of the mix for the harbor, which otherwise that would be, you know, far enough away from any schools and daycares and playgrounds, you know, my deal could fit. But, you know, you see like on map one, I would want to put a dot around the ballpark. And like you said, a lot of people were concerned about with kids around and stuff. I totally see that concern. But, yeah, I guess I don't, I don't feel the need to do 1,000 feet from schools and then all public buildings also. So, I don't know, that's my two cents on these maps. Sorry I was late.
Councilman Schaefer.
I mean, I think it'd be a good idea to stick with the 1,000 feet from the schools because isn't that, that potentially put at risk our ability to get federal funding if they wanted to crack down? So I, I mean, I think we should stick with the 500 buffers and then the 1,000 with the schools.
So someone explain that to Ken because he just missed that.
Yeah.
Section two, because I didn't understand it. It must be jeopardizing federal funding.
Even though the state only put 500 feet for schools. We've been.
There's a reason, I was wondering what the reason.
That secures federal funding.
Drug-free school zones.
Yeah. Drug-free school zones federally are 1,000 feet. So we were advised by the attorney that we should at least.
Sort of imagine.
And council, just for consensus and just so, you know how each other are thinking about this, if you could kind of, as you're looking at these maps, if there's one you like better than others, you might actually just refer to that and they'll, and it sounded like, Councilman, it sounded like you were kind of leaning towards map three.
Well, we can do.
Or two.
I would say I'm leaning towards map two.
Okay.
I don't necessarily see.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
The need to include the hospital or public buildings. I mean, I mean, there are two, like liquor stores on Main Street and two places, like bars also on Main Street. So I don't, I mean, those are near public buildings, like the Cordova Center and other places. So I don't necessarily see how this is much different from that. And Main Street is already out anyway because of the school, but I'm just saying for other public buildings, I don't see how, why that would be needed to be included, given that the state laws are already so restrictive.
Mr. Mayor. Counselman Beadle.
Yeah, I just, you know, if we keep going on this map four, I think we should just eliminate marijuana use in, you know, how do you say, legal marijuana use in Cordova and just go ahead and let the system that's in place already work. You know, they don't have to follow the, they're not following the 1,000-foot rule and the, I mean, the whole town's blacked out. We're looking at a, I mean, when you look at the South Phil, there's a geographic disconnect there, you know? I mean, you can connect it with 1,000 feet, but it's completely geographically, there's a chunk of water there. I've kind of come to the assumption or hope that when we came here tonight, we're trying to come up with rules to regulate and be able to tax an industry already in use in Cordova, you know, maybe have a little better handle on it without the criminal side of it. But looking at these maps, I mean, it's, yeah, it's optimistic, but I just think that as we approach map four, let's just ban marijuana in Cordova and not waste our time and worry about all this stuff. Other than that, I'd, I like map one, I'd accept map two, but three and four, I think we should be still thinking about scrapping marijuana in Cordova. You've taken, I mean, our main business district, Main Street is, I mean, pretty soon we don't have to worry about a downtown business district here. We're eliminating another option there.
Map one will be in place regardless because those are the state buffers.
Yeah, so I mean, it just, I mean, Cordova, we don't have the luxury of, you know, 20 square miles of real estate. Was there any consideration given to what, you know, Valdez is doing or some other smaller communities that, have you looked at those?
For buffer zones?
Yeah. I mean, what they're, you know, they must have had some buffer zones or stuff in there.
Well, map one is a state law, so those buffer zones are not changing regardless.
Of what community?
Correct.
So did you, and the 1,000 is just a recommendation.
The 1,000-foot buffer.
Federal, that if it might, if it might affect our federal funding later, it's not?
Well, and it's not just federal funding. Also in Holly's memo, and I believe I mentioned it in my memo, is that the federal government is staying out of marijuana in states that have legalized it as long as we're making an effort to meet their priorities of.
So with that, have we looked at other communities that are doing this?
Yes, we have looked at other communities. Many of them are regulating it by saying in zoning, you can have it in this district. But they have the benefit of having large areas and lots of zoning districts. Here, it would, I mean, it would be very difficult to do that way. You'd almost end up where you're at right now because you can't do it in central business. Business would be very limited because of the state buffers, you know, so you'd almost end up where you are right now. This is just.
I guess what I'm trying to get to too is we don't want it out at the end of Hartley Bay Road, just outside the city limits. You know, I mean, the.
They can do whatever they want there. It's outside the city limits. They have to follow the state rules. That's it.
And well, where I was going is now you get your marijuana, you gotta drive out there every day, so make it even more hazardous. So just, I just, it's already here. Why are we going to make it so onerous to make it illegal essentially? And then we lose any taxable income. And like you say, if we make it so terrible, it can just go outside, you know, there's property out at Hartley Bay.
So Councilman Beadle brought up some good points and actually I had a chance to talk to Sam and Susan earlier this week and because there have been, I've been approached by people concerned about the sale of marijuana in Cordova. And so I just asked questions about what, what happens if there is a ban and how does that apply to this? So, and jump in and correct me if I don't get this right, Sam, but right now, if council, regardless of what council does, council only has jurisdiction within city limits. So once you get out beyond city limits, you can't ban marijuana if you want it to. It's now a state law, it's legal, it's going to fall under the provisions of state law. Because there's no buffer triggering things out, you know, in those areas, that's going to be open regardless. And so this packet here gives council the regulatory authority to set controls in place. You have several options here to be the regulatory board to approve or disapprove or protest any state licenses. And it also gives you taxing authority to tax it like liquor or not. So that's, that's what this is. But that doesn't prevent council from passing a citywide ban or, or taking it to the voters for an advisory vote on whether or not they want to ban it. And the reason I was asking these questions is because we do have a regular election coming up in March. If the council did want an advisory vote and see what the feeling of the, of the community was, that would be the inexpensive way to at least let the citizens weigh in, so.
I would, I would love that. It would take a lot of load off our shoulders that we did this, we did that, and let the community as a whole, if they decided a majority that they don't want marijuana here, we can move on. If they do, a majority does, and then we have our mandate, so to speak, to go forward with. But, I mean, it could be a simple.
Can I raise my hand?
Yes or no, or, you know, where to, to grow or sell in Cordova.
Okay, so before Sam chews me out, I did want to say that, because I kind of, I kind of got some feedback as well. Well, I'll just let you speak to it, Sam.
So I think we're on the same page. Regardless of whether it goes to a vote, between now and March, it's legal. Anyone could come in here at any point and ask for marijuana. Ask if they could be in a zoning district for marijuana right now. And we've, we've already issued one conditional use permit for cultivation and a retail store. They had to get a conditional use permit because of the particular zone they were in, but not all zones, which would include unrestricted waterfront commercial and waterfront industrial. So right now, we, we are, we are, we will be issuing, we will be issuing a permit if they come in regardless.
Yes.
So there's no regulations in place right now.
I like that Holly explained the conditional use permit. That was, I like that because she says statewide, and state regulations are changing. So with a conditional use permit, we're not grandfathering them in or nothing. So wait, Holly said it in here in her thing, she talked about the conditional use permit. But I do like that, I don't want another petition going around after we've done a lot of work saying that, in Valdez, for example, they had enough people together to get a petition to get marijuana not to be able to be sold, used in, or grown and sold. Good luck trying out while using it.
Well, you cannot.
You cannot do that.
Personally use as legal.
But the thing is, they had enough people to get a petition to get it on a ballot, to get it to the people to vote. It unanimously failed. They're going to sell marijuana there. But the time and effort of where we could just put another, this thing on the ballot, I think would give council so much more direction of, do you move forward or?
Exactly. So to not lose the vein of what Sam was saying and staff's feedback is that putting it on the ballot, whether council wants to do that or not, you should still move forward with this because it gives you the regulatory authority on what not. If the community overwhelmingly wants a ban and council moves that direction, that won't hurt this. But these are something that I think you want to get in place when we have put, you have put quite a bit of time and expense into getting here. And that's exactly why I wanted to mention to council about the regular election because then we don't have to go through that expensive referendum process and it's just a good opportunity, great opportunity to get some feedback. So, Councilman Schaefer, did you have a question or something?
Oh, I was just going to say, if everyone does eventually, if we want to put it on the ballot, then I would be fine with that. But also, I'm of the opinion that Cordovans voted on this three years ago. You know, I mean, they voted in favor of the legalization.
One to one.
Yeah, two to one. So, I mean, to me, they've already voted on it. But if you, if council does think that this would be a good idea just to recheck in and make sure we're covering our bases, then I could support that too. But I don't know, I don't know if I feel it's absolutely necessary.
Councilman Gard.
Issues can become contentious easily in Cordova. And if for no other purpose than to stop strange strife with that, I mean, I'm sure we all know how the vote is more than likely to come out with it. But if we have a portion of the population that feels they weren't heard or weren't affected, and, you know, I have my own personal preferences for what I think would probably be fine with me for exclusion zones, there are other people that are going to have a lot of fear with this going on. Like we were talking down at the South Phil at the harbor there, we've got that one little corner there on some of the maps, the, like on map two, where they could go down on the end of the South Phil. You gotta drive through, school zone, you know, 1,000-foot exclusionary zone around a school to get in and out of there. And also, there are a lot of kids that go down and play at the harbor and stuff. So people that have fears for their kids being unduly influenced, you know. The more we can try to appease as many people as we can in this, the smoother the sale is probably going to be going down the road with it.
Do you have a preference for one of these maps, Councilman Gard?
Either four or three. And I may be leaning towards three, but I have a hard time with three, it was as big as red flag.
And I'm not trying to put any councilman on the spot. I was just, basically I was asking, is there one, if council, if you do have one in mind that you really like, it might not hurt to say that, so.
I would support map two.
And council, I did want to mention in the past, you've, this is a work session, it's not a public hearing, but I know council's, in the past has welcomed public input. And I know we do have members of the public that might like to chime in if you want to open the mic.
I'd be in favor of that.
Okay, I'm seeing this, so if anyone in the audience would like to come and speak to the work session agenda on city ordinances regarding marijuana, council would love to hear your feedback.
Thank you for the opportunity. I wasn't planning on speaking because usually this is just a work session. I'd say my name is Tom Carpenter, 501 Sunnyside Drive. Just sitting here listening to the debate, you know, I think this is probably one of those issues, it's going to be like any controversial issue in Cordova, it's going to be 50/50 on one side of it or the other, most likely. I think the thing that's a little bit interesting about the four maps that you have is that the marijuana industry looks like it's going to be, it's going to be pushed at least inside the city limits to a very specific part of Cordova. I own, I own a piece of property there in the industrial zone. And I also work for an individual who has probably the biggest piece of property in this area that would be open. Our personal opinions aside, you know, we're, we're willing to do whatever we can for the best of Cordova, but our opinion is, I tend to agree with Mr. Beadle on this one. It's a very, I think this is a very important topic for Cordova in the long run, and I think it would be very beneficial, even though theoretically we have voted on it and it was, you know, a two to one margin in favor of allowing this, but that was several years ago. I think some of the details that have come forward in regards to zoning and the different nuances associated with this industry, I think that some people's perceptions may have changed, some people's may have not, but I think for the amount of money that the city will have to, to put out to include this on the ballot is negligible. And I think that, I think that the feedback that you're going to get from that vote just, it does make it to where it's a lot easier decision for you guys to make in the long run. And basically, after the votes, you can get down to taxation. And that's really what this is all about, keeping people away from, you know, the schools and stuff like that. And it's, it's a taxable entity and, and that's really what the focus should be after you get a true feeling of what the current feeling of people in Cordova is in regards to this topic. So that's really all I have.
Thanks. Thank you.
Can I just say that I believe the, the vote, like the ballot proposition, would probably be along those lines. Should marijuana establishment operations be allowed to exist within the city of Cordova? Yes, no? I mean, that's, it's kind of. I mean, that's, it's kind of opt-in, opt-out, is probably what the vote would be.
Thank you, Susan, because that's one of the most difficult parts of putting something on the ballot, is just having a very simple, non-directional-type language that kind of will give you the feeling of the community.
I just, that includes growing and selling?
Yes.
So, we have one for each?
No, we do not have one for each. It would just be the businesses, the industry of marijuana, yes or no, in Cordova, allowed or not allowed?
In city limits.
Yes, personal use is separate.
Yeah.
That hasn't been since...
Did it say within city limits of Cordova?
Well, within the city of Cordova is city limits. I mean, I guess we could, we could define, but you guys all understand that city limits are just 16-mile on the highway, and to, you know, so these red dots are all in-town stuff, and all that other area is wide open still.
Wait, there's, so that on the maps, there really is no buffer issues past what you're looking at. I mean, certainly, a church could be built somewhere, and then that would become an area that was buffered in the future. But, right now, this is where the impacts are.
Yeah, but if that was, if the business was established and they were going already, then that would be grandfathered down.
Correct, until that license is expired or revoked. If you built a church next door after a marijuana establishment was in place, the conditional use permit and the state license would stay in place.
So, expired means they don't renew timely, but renewals are fine to go if...
And they can get revoked, by the state, if they break the rule.
If we do that, we want to allude to allow commercial, legal, commercial marijuana industry, because...
I mean, I can...
You can have black market stuff that, I'm not saying specifically here in Cordova, but that has been a problem, where legalization happened in a lot of other states, they've still got a fairly substantial black market industry there.
I mean, I guess...
Yeah, I think that if it's illegal, it can be just shut down by enforcement, I think, but...
If it's illegal, it's illegal. Yeah, it's the cops going and taking care of it, but...
I think the simpler, the better, though, partly just for the legal expenses and everything, and also just for the general public to understand the basics.
Maybe you could put the definition of a marijuana establishment, right?
Yeah, down below.
Because testing, manufacturing, which means producing edibles, or oils, or whatever, retail, and cultivation.
Yeah, you can have a, you can have some background information, I think, but then just have a simple vote, I'm not going to allow it. Councilman Jones?
So, I guess one concern I would have, that's with maps three and four, if you include all public buildings, I mean, we're not looking at all the public buildings on this map. There's the fire station at four-and-a-half mile, there's Skater's Cabin.
Right, but public buildings were defined as buildings with, open to the public with established hours.
Okay.
So, that's why mile four is not on there.
And then, there's also the airport, would that be considered a public building?
Correct, that would be...
So, there are other exclusion zones that we're talking about that aren't necessarily on this?
And the airport is within city limits, right?
Yes, and this portion is not part of a ballot, right?
Yeah.
So, we're all clear on that. This is your city council decision, the map, the buffer part, other than map one, which is the state rules.
And staff, and I think staff would advise moving ahead with 1162, regardless of whether you're putting it on the ballot. I just wrote a note to myself to bring a resolution to the January 3 meeting, placing it on the ballot. If you agree that that's the consensus, right? I mean, I think I've heard enough.
Is there a consensus, council? Would you like to see this ballot for advisory vote?
I'm seeing at least five nods, six nods.
Okay.
One, one. Councilman Beadle, then, Schaefer?
And also, if it's on the ballot and it doesn't pass, there is business people in town that are already willing and able to start a business, and it would give them direction to know if they want to pursue it, they just have to find land outside, so it would allow them to, you know, we're not in the business of curtailing business, but if, you know, just so they could move forward in their endeavors.
That's a good point, Councilman Beadle, before a business, if you pass, move forward with these and pass these, which I think staff's recommending, and then the business doesn't have to worry about whether council's going to try to opt out or something, so point if you have an advisory vote, make a clean decision. So, Councilman Schaefer?
The surtax on the sales, does that go to the state, or do we decide how that's spent?
That's ours, that's city tax. So, from the state, we get a portion of their application fees, and if you are doing retail and cultivation, that's two licenses, so we get a portion of that. And then, the state also has tax, excise tax, but we don't get that directly. But, of course, if it's money in the state coffers, it's a benefit to everybody.
So, what is the state excise tax?
I, actually, I don't know that.
And we can look at other taxes in the future, as mentioned in the memo, if we choose, you know, we're open for that. A sales tax, the surtax is just kind of a simple...
Okay, council, we're starting to get some cross-conversations going and stuff. I was hearing that on both sides. Okay, so...
So, I guess I have one more question.
Councilman Jones, yeah?
So, on map three, and...
Which map, I'm sorry?
Map three.
Yes.
It looks like there's three bubbles, kind of around the Nirvana Park area. I thought that was redefined as the cemetery, is it still a park?
I believe so.
It's technically Nirvana Cemetery Park, MDF, very open.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Beadle?
So, tonight, in this ordinance, 1162, so that's going to pass this?
No, well, that's going to, ordinance 1162 has the sales tax, or the surtax, I'm sorry. P&amp;Z's recommendation, which is map three, and chapter 8.4, which sets you guys up as a regulatory authority, and dictates how those protests, I'm going to say hearings, is that okay?
Yes.
How those hearings will roll. And it also gives some language in there that says we're going to, you know, do what the feds want to help not have kids associated with marijuana and that kind of stuff, so...
It's a noble idea.
So, be prepared, if anybody is interested more in map two, make that amendment when we get to it at the regular meeting.
Yeah. So, council, I had kind of opened it up to the public, and then we got back to council discussion, and I see there's members of the public that still might like to testify, if that's all right. Okay, sounds like they'd like to hear, so if you could just state your name and address for the record, thank you.
I'm Alina Meyer at One Camaro. I am the one that actually has a conditional use permit for cultivation and retail right now, and I'm in the process of getting it into the state, and it's under review right now for my applications. Going back to the maps, when I was first reading through this the other day, map one takes out a lot of Main Street, where we want businesses. And marijuana is a controversial issue for people, but we do have bars on Main Street. I think drinking is a bigger problem in this town than marijuana, and I think that the vote, when Cordova voted for it a couple of years ago, reflect that, and that marijuana is being used in this town, it'd be nice for it to be taxed and regulated. And the state has went into extensive regulation process, and they also do enforcement. And I think if anyone has problems with it, or questions and concerns, they should really go to the state website and look into the regulations. I personally don't think that Cordova should put in their own buffer zones and leave it to the state, because the state is doing those regulations, and they are complying as much as possible with the federal government, because they are regulating the whole industry in the state, not just a community. So, I think personally, just talking about this, that there should be no buffer zones or buffer zone map one. I would like to see retail on Main Street. My conditional use permit's actually, for a business, if I was to do this, map four would probably be the best, because it pretty much takes out anybody else, and I'm still out of the red zone, so.
I mean...
But, personally, I'd swan this industry to move forward into the regulation process, map one or map two, but I think you are cutting out some areas on the South Phil that would be nice to have some retail down there. I don't think it has to be a scary thing, there's a lot of regulations about it, about safety containers, childproof containers, smell control, security, there's a lot more regulations than there is for a bar in Cordova. They don't, bars aren't required to have cameras, you're required to have extensive cameras and different security systems for these, so I just don't think that the city of Cordova needs to go extensive into the regulation process. The state has kind of been doing that, and they have been enforcing it. If you go over the minutes that they've been going through for all their boards, they have been enforcing their regulations pretty extensively. But, those are my thoughts on there, and if the town does want to vote on it again, I think that's just kind of wasting resources, and instead of me putting my money into creating a business and creating jobs, I'm going to be putting into educating people on all this, and I'd rather just create a business that is following all the regulations as much as possible, so.
Okay, thank you. Other comments from council, for the, from the public, I mean? And this work session, again, is regarding ordinance 1162, the regulations, Cordova regulation, Cordova regulations regarding marijuana sale. Any other comments or questions from council? Councilman Beadle?
I was over in Valdez at some meetings, and met up with a buddy of mine, and he, anyway, I was asking about Valdez, they had the first, called dispensary, in the state, and, well, let's go check it out, you know? And, you know, you walk in the door, and they had like a arch entry thing, it's pretty well, and you're ID'd, and you walk in, and, you know, it is, like you said, the thing's on display, it's regulated, it's tested, you know? You don't get something laced with something else. And then, in our conversation, he said that, oh, there's a grow facility here. You know, no kidding? Where's it at? Could I go see it? He said, sure. So, we drive out the road, and there was somebody's garage, I mean, and there's houses around it and stuff, and the only, I mean, that I knew that it was a grow facility, otherwise I wouldn't have, it was this nondescript building, and it had plywood nailed over the, where windows used to be, but there was, you know, I'm sure there was cameras and a security system and stuff in there, but it's not like it's going to be this big ugly dinosaur monster coming to town and disrupting things, and if the community wants it, I'm just, just to kind of alleviate some fears of this big crazy place, I mean, you're carded, you're ID'd, just to get into the place. So, I mean, it's not a Wild West scene, but anyway, just thought I'd throw that in.
Other comments or questions, council? Yes, council's opening it up to the public, so if you just want to state your name and address for the record?
Chris Bullen, 607 Burke Street.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I'll do it.
Your one.
The buffer zones, if we go above and beyond the state buffer, we're required to enforce that?
That's our rules, yes.
And that's above, so the state wouldn't be doing that, it would be on their plate?
They would enforce their, but they wouldn't do it.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. You bet. So, that enforcement, again, wouldn't be you, so it would just be as the permits came through, you probably just checked to see if they're requesting within or outside the buffer zone, or if you found one that was actually unlicensed or unpermitted inside the buffer zone, they'd be facing enforcement.
Well, yeah, they can't have a marijuana establishment if they don't have a license, a state license, or if this passes, if it's going to be...
Councilman Alson?
Yeah, I guess that's where I was getting at, the only, state is still going to do all the enforcement, except for where it's located at. Like, like she says, there's, if they, if they put a establishment outside, or inside of a buffer zone, that's just the city's buffer zone, I mean, they...
They wouldn't get a...
They wouldn't get the permit, yeah, so it would be an illegal operation. So, I guess I'm not worried about extra cost of enforcement, because, you know, they're still going to have to follow all the, all the rules, so.
With the sales or surtax enforcement.
Yeah, and that's, that's the corollary, if they, if it was a city-only buffer zone, they did get the permits and everything, the state is still going to enforce the state laws inside of there, because they're a state licensed organization, so. Councilman Jones?
Just want to have, pointed out that there's already illegal marijuana businesses operating in this town. Everybody who's a black market dealer is an illegal, unlicensed marijuana business. So, just because these red dots aren't a map, doesn't stop people from having illegal businesses within them. I mean, we have, we have enforcement issues with other business licenses already, so just want to point it out.
Councilman Derrick?
I think the way, tell me to answer if I'm wrong, but for the state licensing process, the state takes into considerations any restrictions the community has above and beyond the state's exclusionary zone? So, to get a state license, you have to meet all the local requirements?
Correct, so before you can turn in a completed state application, you have to have all your ducks in a row at the city level. So, you have to have a conditional use permit, if that's required, you have to have a business license, and then you have a completed license, that goes to the state, it gets reviewed, and then the city clerk is notified that they have a completed and reviewed license for Cordova. And then, that will come in front of you all, and you guys get to review again, and I'm sure Susan would ask for staff's input on the buffer zones. You get to look at other things, such as sales tax, public input, and all that stuff. So, yeah, there's multiple steps for reviewing.
Well, just for the enforcement thing, boy, I understand the state process covers local or scripture.
The state will take your, no, they are not meeting our buffer zones, but they're not going to come here and make sure that business is within our additional buffer zones. And they're going to ask us to make, you know, look and see that they're within the state buffer zone.
Councilman Jones?
Just one more thing I want to point out, is, you know, we do have an issue with black market, illegal, unlicensed dealers in this town. If we move forward and allow legal, regulated businesses, it will drive some of that business down, and I think that's a good thing for our community, and obviously, the tax revenues. So, yeah, I mean, I'm in support of moving forward and getting some ordinances on the books to taxes, and I'm also in favor of getting some public, more public opinion before we determine the exclusion zone, so. I know this is just a workshop, we're not going to vote on this yet, but those are my thoughts.
She's coming right up.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, the regular...
Yes, but...
You're not promoting right?
Not now, we're going to talk about it again and then vote, so, thank you.
Councilman Beadle?
So, I mean, we're getting a shot at a discussion, and like Mr. Jones says, hopefully, we're going to get... we're going to get quite a bit more public input. So what is, I mean, if, if we decide to change something, is this, the steps in the process, if we decide something isn't working, or we need something else, for us to, to change something in the, the regulations, our, our local regulations? I know we can't change state, but.
Just like any other section of code, you know, if you, if we're having an issue with a section of code, you rewrite it, bring it forward, have that discussion, say why it's being rewritten, and change it.
So without a discussion, we could have a.
Certainly, any section of code.
I'd like to get that on the record and out, just so that people aren't saying that this is a, a want and done.
Yeah, and I mean, you could, at this point, you don't even have to, go ahead.
I don't want to sound like the snatcher, because I'm not arguing against this industry or this stuff happening. I see way less problems with it than I see with alcohol, all kinds of stuff. But it has to work for the whole community, and there are a lot of people that don't have the same mindset that a, that a lot of other people have. And if we make this as unrestricted as we can to start with, and then we decided a later date that, oh, we really should have gone ahead and put something out here for this, for the kids in the summer that are going to swim there, whatever, we want to keep that away from. If we've already allowed something to go in there, if we change the regulation at that time, they're already going to be grandfathered in, so they, it's a business that we can't just run out when we change our mind. So legally, it would be easier to loosen things than tighten things, wouldn't it?
I guess that's a way to look at it.
I'm not advocating.
You have to have a piece of property to put something on, so they're not going to be on the spit.
No, I, I understand, but I was just doing it, for instance, with that.
But, yeah. And the definition for the state, for recreational areas, recreational, can't remember their terminology exactly, to look at the definition for that, to see what that involves exactly. It may take out a park, but I'm not sure. We can always.
I'm not arguing against, I'm just playing devil's advocate.
I don't have a, I don't have anything in this, you know, discussion. I'm just trying to tell you the differences, but maybe I lost my train of thought on that, but.
And do we have to have two readings on this? So potentially we'll pass what we, which ones we want to go with, and then maybe get some public feedback before the second time we have to.
No, I understand.
Rule, anyway.
Kind of throwing some.
There will be time for more public, again, this is.
The chew on and bank on, but now I'm one with conditions. I'm sure we'll come up with what's appropriate.
Can I have one other?
It's a voting process.
Yes.
About the procedure. So this ordinance, at least partially, amends Title 18, which has a special rule that for the second reading, which is the public hearing of an ordinance amending Title 18, I need to advertise the public hearing 15 days in advance. So this cannot be done at our next meeting.
Okay.
So it'll be.
Second January.
A month between, yeah, it'll be the second January meeting, if you pass it tonight.
So, and it sounds like there is consensus among council to put it on the ballot, so there's going to be plenty of opportunity for public input discussions.
And you could also have another work session if you chose to, on the ordinance, after the, in between.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion, Councilman Jones?
I guess I just have a question. I'm not clear, I think it might have already been discussed, but, so you, you mentioned how if they have a conditional use permit, they go through the state process, and they're already an established business, that we can't necessarily just kick them out if a church moves in, or if a school moves into that area.
Correct, so.
So what, I mean, I guess I'm curious, if we go to the ballot in March, and the town decides to not allow it, would the current conditional use permit still be in effect, or did it be immediately shut down? I guess I'm just curious.
It would be voided at that point.
Okay.
Because it would be banned from, the whole marijuana establishment would not be allowed.
Hmm, okay.
So it would eliminate that conditional use permit.
Councilman Beetle.
I think they kind of designed it after the, you know, out west, dry, damp, a wet town, you know, for alcohol. You know, it's legal, but each community can decide their, what, what level they want it. So I think, you know, that's, they gave each community the option to opt out or opt into it.
And you can only opt out or in. There's no, we're in with retail, but nothing else. It's in or out. There's no way in between.
So counsel, to, to move us to our regular meeting agenda, and there will be time for discussion on this item, I just want to re, reconfirm with Sam while you're here, that so the way the, the way the ordinance 1162 is currently presented, it's all three provisions, one to make a taxing, the city, a taxing entity, two to put the, the Title 18 restrictions in place, and, and three to establish the.
The council has the regulatory authority.
Taxing authority.
The taxation, and.
And then the.
Additional use.
The conditional use permits. That, Title 18, it's, it's map three that's currently the one.
Right, so that's the additional buffer facilities.
Yeah.
And the 1,000.
So of those three, that's really the one that council, it sounds like, from the discussion, it's the, the Title 18 piece that, if, again, map three is the one that's kind of presented, and if you're looking at, at a different option to present that as an amendment. So with that, I think I'll go ahead and wrap up the public here, I mean, the work session. And then, since we started just a few minutes late, we'll.